Hey, good morning. I'll call the meeting as it order. We have approval of our agenda today.
Go on, move.
Second, sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved minutes for the last meeting, Betty.
September third, twenty twenty four. Uh, there was no action taken as Drainage District Trustees. Chairman Hugable called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine AM. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Hugable. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. Motion by Cluse, second by Rasmussen to appoint Julie Rosenfeldy as a civil process server effective August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Motion carries. Cluse presented the engagement letter from Allers and Cooney for joint representation of seven counties seeking judicial review of the Iowa Utility Commission's decision granting the pipeline permit to Summit Carbon Solutions. This will be asking the district court to uh, review all legal decisions and reasonings made behind the decision. Motion by Cluse, second by Hugable to have the chairman sign the engagement letter from Allers and Cooney with seven other counties for joint representation on Iowa Utilities Commission's decision. Motion carries with Rasmussen opposing. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer, gave an update on secondary roads. There were seven work orders completed last week. Flakes are spot blading due to dry conditions. The dusting of the twenty twenty five gravel miles is fifty three point two eight percent complete with sixty five of the one hundred and twenty two completed. Crews are starting to haul rock to the Agribusiness Park Wellhouse project that secondary roads will be completing. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additional corrections? Not fully stand approved is read. Open forum for the public. Anybody here or online wish to address the board? Like Sandy, you have some points.
Good morning. So, um, wanted to introduce uh, Monica Rosas, she is um, a family support worker, working really hard on getting her modules done. She has like sixty four of them to to get trained in. Um, she started about a month ago. Um, Carrie, she's been here a year. Um, Monica's primary language is Spanish and she's learning English very, very well. Um, Carrie's also our family support worker who has done an awesome job on our program is we have way more clients than our contract is, but there it's needed. And so he's done a really good job and Monica's done a good job. So. Wanted to introduce them. Again, reminding the departments, if you need assistance with interpreters, there's three of them um, in our department. So. Call if you need help.
Monica, do you speak Spanish also?
Um, she's mainly Spanish.
Mainly Spanish, okay.
So, yeah, she uh, yep, so we're we're sat there. So I'll let you too. You guys can go.
Welcome. Thank you.
I would love to make my big giggle. And Jamie, Jamie, um, he started a couple of weeks ago, our environmental health specialist, because we took on Humboldt County. And he's dove in and doing really well.
At first.
There you go.
It's a secret spoon, I told him. So, so we've uh, I'm done probably having to do water samples on Sundays and um, he's got that down and we're working on the septic stuff and I think he's ready to roll. There'll be a lot of training he'll have to take because there's um, with this job, there's twelve seat views that are required every year. So there's just pieces that he's just gonna learn as he goes through the way out.
About pools, will we have to wait till next spring for training on that or?
Yep, I may do the, my, let's see, my CPO training might be due next year, so we may just do it together.
True.
And then we'll whip out the pools after that, but they won't have training until springtime. And that's another, um, I just did all of Humboldt Counties and they weren't maybe so used to. I don't know. Not a hard nose, but being as as picky as, you know, the consistency, because I've been doing it for like fourteen years, so. So at least we can keep that coverage going and he can get through. Even if he hasn't taken the class, he'll take it with the inspection.
Yeah.
It'll be nice to have him to not only help with Humboldt County, but also ease up your workload in the future.
With the cross-training too.
Yeah, no, it'll be perfect because it definitely um, was needed because if I was eaten by a bear, it would have been a problem.
Is the the paperwork side of it on the Humboldt County side, do their forms?
It's a mess.
It's a mess, okay. Alright, are you gonna work with them to get that?
I'm working on getting it organized right now.
Excellent. It's adding up speed.
Yeah, so we'll have to go at one point and and unify our fees. Um, and then we'll meet with with their board health, their supervisors. I kind of wanted to wait until till I got somebody hired. So, but he's been over there um, with me a few times. So they're learning him also, so.
They've been sort of a mess for quite a few years. You've been helping them out off and on.
Yeah.
I guess there's some consistency over there then.
That Gary Jensen, that contractor over there, he said that they've never had a sanitarian that was cared about what they're doing or anything, so.
Good.
Yep.
Well, welcome aboard.
Yeah, great. So there you go. And he's done all his FEMA training now, so he's NIMs compliant, so just keep on going.
Don't ask me about any of it.
Thank you.
Um, Sandy, I was just wondering, uh, there was on your twenty eight E, there is a person appointed from the Humboldt County Board and uh, somebody appointed from the Wright County Board. Have you made those appointments?
Uh, I can if you want me to appoint somebody. Someone will have to just maybe be that contact between the two.
Correct.
And I was assuming it was Rick and Sandy.
Rick and Sandy, I believe it was one of those. Yeah.
If that's the two officially.
You probably need to because the twenty eight EU agreement has got somebody appointed to that.
Rick and Sandy were both involved with, you know, getting all that twenty eight figured out.
Oh, you're good. Sandy would be good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I have two issues. One, I'm hard of hearing. We had a, we had a trial at the, in the court uh, on the third floor. And I was at a terrible disadvantage because of my hearing loss. I mean, what I would suggest is that you get headphones so that you know, the hearing impaired can actually hear.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the other issue, a couple, a couple or three years ago, we have clumps of grass and rock on the side of the road. Well, they're back. And uh, they're worse than ever. And I tried to bring some pictures for you, but uh, the battery died in the camera. But anyway, you really need to go out to Youngwood in between one hundred ten street and one hundred twenty street and drive that road and look at the mess. There are four places in that one mile where those clumps got so big that they pushed them off into the ditch, rock, rock and weeds. Now, if a farmer's good enough to mow his road ditches next spring, he comes along, he's gonna hit that, it's just gonna tear his mower all up. You know, but here we are, we're trying to move big, heavy, expensive equipment down the road. And we gotta bounce off of piles of crap that big.
Was it mowed before?
Was it mowed before? No, they they cut it off with the maul board.
I'll go review it.
Okay. Now, sometimes with the the mower, they get the grass in the uh, in on there, and then when the grader comes in, it just, it rolls it up into big, big balls.
That's not the problem.
Okay.
The problem is they're trying to cut the, cut the curb off with the, with the maul board. They're taking the grass with it. It's green. It won't roll. It won't, nothing. It just balls up. And then when it balls up, it got so big in that one mile that they pushed, it was so big, they didn't think it was safe for cars. So they pushed it off the rock and and the weeds into the ditch. You know, and it's just uh, it's not the operator's fault. They're not getting any training.
Okay. You take a look at it.
I'll review it. I'll take pictures and bring it back to you next week.
Sounds good.
For the news media, that was John Waltzing speaking.
And we'll touch base with the clerk of court because they, the clerk of court has control of the courthouse or the courtroom there. John, did you have an opportunity when you were at court? Did they ask you uh, when you were having trouble hearing? Did they offer you any other uh, solutions?
No, they, and you know how attorneys are. Once he knew that I was subjected to hearing loss, you know, he deliberately spoke softly. You know, and it's just uh,
Okay.
You know, I mean, it just you're at terrible disadvantage.
Agreed. Good. Okay, thank you.
Bob Ritter also wished to address the board.
Okay, hang on one second, Bob. Go ahead.
It won't take long. I just want to let everybody know that we are out doing good work. So there will always be two females in our work truck. The truck will always be labeled. We will always have our IDs on us. We're doing the small towns this year. Uh, we did Galt Rowan. We're gonna do Goldfield, Woolstock, and Dows. So we always have cards with us with our numbers. Um, I did get magnets that say Wright County Assessor if we do have to take another vehicle for any reason. So we will always have our name out there. So. If anybody has any questions, call our office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, good morning. I'm sure you know what I want to talk about. Um, the uh, about a week, ten days ago, I went to another meeting of uh, the pipeline people on the second leg that they're doing and uh, Jake Kurtz is talking about drainage and how they're gonna bore under all the tile. And uh, the district tile, not farm tile, district tile. And Dean, you have a map, don't you, that shows where the pipeline's going under all the district tile?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll get back together and talk on that later. But the uh, I guess I got home and I took out my uh, files that I've been keeping on this. I came to the county. I had it labeled ordinance, which you have for the secondary roads, uh, but you only have a resolution. And uh, I guess I want to formally ask you people to make that resolution an ordinance because uh, I looked it up and uh, thanks to Courtney and you people, our website in Wright County is absolutely fantastic to look up stuff on drainage or anything else. It's just it's a God sent for somebody who wants to be out here in the country and sit in the office and look at stuff. But an ordinance uh, and a resolution, the difference is that it's, it's a law, an ordinance, and a resolution is uh, kind of a temporary or special matters, which uh, we hope this never happens. The I I just think you need to because uh, in the resolution, you uh, state that how it's uh, you're doing this for the public health, convenience, and welfare, and you're establishing this uh, resolution. But a resolution is not law. And if by some miracle, this thing happens to go through uh, and it isn't just, I was just on this morning and looking at uh, thank goodness, the map for one, uh, big number three is on there, the drainage district, and the piece that they're going through on ours is sub-district of that of one eighty seven. The, the problem is uh, we have two sixteen inches and I'll try and show that to you, Dean. We'll get together sometime here in the near future. And uh, the, I had my tile guys come out this spring and the one down in the low ground is uh, three foot, ten inches to the top of a sixteen inch tile. The problem is, everybody says it's in the ordinance, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says like the road, secondary roads, you've got specific rules of how they have to drill. And it says they're supposed to go at a ninety degree angle. Well, they're gonna have to dig all kinds of holes. Four holes, giant holes to dig under these sixteen inch tile, which I have no control over. Uh, you guys control that, the drainage districts. So that's the reason I'm requesting an ordinance instead of a uh, resolution on the, let's see, what did you call that? Uh, I was done in July of twenty three.
You got, I'm, I'm familiar with what you're talking about. Uh, and I don't remember the reasoning why we didn't do an ordinance, but I think it relates to the fact that drainage is already covered in Iowa code under four sixty eight. Um, and I don't remember if if four sixty eight says that a board can take action through resolution. Um, I need to review that, Bob, before I can even speak uh, intelligently about it.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll talk some more. I'll, and I'm trying to put together a whole piece on this. I just uh, stumbled onto this and uh, I didn't realize all this information. Yeah, it's uh, four sixty eight point two. The drainage uh, that's the Iowa code, but then there's several one, uh, four sixty eight point one eight six is also uh, several other uh, agenda. But the summit is telling everybody that according to Iowa code, it's, they only have to go a foot under. Well, a foot under these uh, one hundred year old tile that were put in by hand.
Yeah, that's, that's probably not gonna work.
No, it it's uh, and even two foot, and depends on the slope, if they dig right up to it on both sides. But it also says in the resolution that they can do the open cut, which uh, thank goodness, I did what uh, another good Wright County, our Drainage Dirt District Attorney, uh, when I was talking with you guys. And he was also on a Zoom meeting about a year ago. He said to document everything, and I've been doing that. And in the, in the easements, it says nothing about how they will dig it. Uh, if if you figure that out, you're gonna have to be about uh, a good six feet in the ground just to bore this, it says ten inch pipe going through our place. So that's uh, they have to be that deep. Uh, they're gonna have to dig a heck of a hole to bore under that, one on each side. So I'm gonna have four giant holes out there. And uh, it's uh, unless somebody's there, uh, they will not uh, if they get pushed. I've been around construction people before and uh, they push and they skip things. But uh, you check on that, Dean, and I'll
I will.
I'll talk to you some more on that. But the, let's see, I think I've covered everything that I've got here this morning. Yeah, I'll uh, I'll be in touch in a couple of weeks, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
If you find out something on that, if it's, would it say that in one eighty seven?
I will give you a call, uh, regardless of what I find out.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob. Um, let's go ahead to our timed event nine fifteen. Jeff, with Community and Family Resource, you got date on Recovery Month?
Welcome. Thank you. Uh, first, I'll uh, give an introduction to Recovery Month and then give some CFR updates. So, good morning, esteemed members of Board of Supervisors and community. Today, we're claiming September as Substance Recovery Month. This is a time to honor those in recovery and recognize the challenges of substance use disorders. Addiction affects millions, and we demonstrate that there is no one alone in this struggle. We celebrate those in recovery. Their stories inspire hope and underscore the importance of why we need community support. Together as a community, let us foster an environment of healing and work to break down the stigma. I encourage the board and everyone to participate and advance this month and promote awareness uh, of available resources. Together, we can support those affected by substance and celebrate their recovery. Thank you. Um, just to see a bar update, Webster City, I know I've uh, I've talked before that we did purchase uh, that property, uh, that whole building on Fair Meadow, five hundred Fair Meadow Avenue. Uh, it used to be Veterans Affairs there. Um, we are starting a fourteen bed uh, recovery and residential for men uh, at the time there. Uh, that should be going by the end of the month. Uh, we will be having an open house on the twenty fifth from four to six. Some of the things going on that CFR is active in Wright County. Uh, starting next week, I'll be in clearing uh, Community Middle School, teaching uh, vaping, smoking, and tobacco awareness for a whole week there. Then, starting in November, uh, we'll be teaching uh, life skills there, thanks to uh, Wright County Funding for the rest of the year. Also, uh, reaching out to Eagle Grove and Belmont, trying to schedule programming there for, as well for the life skills.
Or how about the vaping in the other schools?
So, so we have switched to a different uh, programming, uh, Stanford Medicines uh, that I'll be doing. It's a week long program instead of the one-time presentations. Uh, last year, I was able to go into Eagle Grove. Um, and actually, that was for adults and teaching the teachers through their development days, but uh, we are trying to schedule right now to the, the same programming in Eagle Grove and Belmont.
Okay, great. Is there resistance at the school level for doing that or?
Absolutely. I mean, there's been some communication issues that we've had with Belmont, um, just because the turnover of staff and stuff that they've had there. But now that uh, we're uh, starting to network with them, that's, uh, like I said, we're just uh, on the cusp of getting things scheduled.
Uh, the last time that you briefed us, when you were um, you were online, actually, uh, you gave us the hours that uh, that there was a counselor on staff in Webster City. Can you review that again?
Again, so there has been some changes since then.
Okay.
So, uh, we do have mental health services. Every Thursday, Dr. McGregor is there in her staff. Um, and she is there from eight AM to five PM.
Is that by appointment only?
No. Well, I mean, you can get walk-ins and typically the walk-in is able to get in that.
Okay.
So they might have to wait if there's ever clients there. Um, we have full-time substance use disorder counselors here right now. Um, when the recovery start, house starts, um, we will have full-time counselor and case manager. That will be the role that I'll actually be transitioning into. Um, and we will also have two peer recovery coaches there.
Excellent. So that building location that they're talking about is right across from uh, which?
Yeah, so you know, one of Mahari Devil offices, right across from there.
It used to be the second judicial district.
Yes.
Yes. Building families used to meet there in the very beginning too. And also, we have a proclamation for uh, National Recovery Month. That's awesome. I would make a motion to uh, set September as Recovery Month uh, by proclamation.
Sorry.
As presented.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you. Appreciate the update.
Thanks.
Receive and approve uh, the filing annual urban renewal report, Betty.
I didn't know if you wanted to jump down because we have a conference call coming up. Or do we have time?
We can shoot through this. Yeah, you can make it. Yeah, because that uh, that's called box off.
So the um, annual uh, TIP taxing district urban renewal report is, um, shows that cash on hand at the end, uh, June thirty, twenty twenty four, we had cash on hand of two million, twelve thou- twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty seven dollars. And um, and that is like cash in the bank that we have. Um, we are working on, and that is on our three TIP districts. Um, and we are working on lowering that balance down over the course of years. Um, our total year and outstanding TIP debt um, including the like the rebate for prestige is nine million, thirty one thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars. Um, I do have uh, the entire report here, if anybody wants to really look at it to see um, where we're at. Dean had requested to see, um, I have a spreadsheet upstairs of um, all of our current debt and the payment schedules to see when um, some of the loans are gonna start dropping off. I think the Agribusiness Park, I think we have one more payment left on both the, the the land is paid off, but the infrastructure, I think we have just one more year, so twenty twenty five.
We released a million five back into the accidentities on that anyway.
The
Yeah, I had a collect one point two five million instead of receipt, trying to get the two million. So, yeah.
Yeah.
So yes.
And some of those things, we can't prepay because they're bonds, right?
Um, so like the, we already refinanced the uh, wind farm. And so the call, we don't have a call date and um, these other ones, we don't have call dates on, so.
Okay. Could we refinance them, the wind farms, two years ago?
Somewhere around there.
Were interest rates really good?
Yes. And right now, all of the interest rates, I wouldn't, I don't think I would want, it'd be no benefit to refinance anything right now.
Sure.
Because our interest rates are so low.
Okay. Motion to uh, receive and approve the annual urban renewal report.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Month the Sheriff's Re- Revenue Reports. Okay, County Car Service and Mileage is two thousand, six hundred and ninety eight thousand, seventy four cents. Uh, weapons permits renewals or new, five hundred and twenty, and copies of sixty dollars per grand total of three thousand, two hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy four cents.
Motion to approve.
So, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. How much time you need, Al?
Um, I think I get it done.
Okay.
So a quick update, um, drill operators out spot lighting, um, due to dry conditions, working their dusting miles. Uh, where they're getting haul, prepping dust control areas for seven, second applications. Uh, marking cut on gravel roads. Um, we've taken some complaints about large um, sods, sod pieces. I'm a little confused. That's why I gotta go take a look at that. That sounds more like somebody blew their grass onto the road and got big balls, like I showed you before, and had to punt it off. That's what that sounds like, more like, because they wouldn't punt it that that off. They would actually use that if they're gonna make their marking cut. So, um, I've been working with Nate. We're gonna start kind of a five-year program with each one of the blade operators to um, put, put a, put a process in place to do their marking cut, to make sure that we can get the right PR out there so that people understand that, hey, this is coming, um, and when they're gonna do it, so that there's a little bit of communication from the blade operator back to the superintendent and myself. So that we make sure that, hey, we get a phone call, yep, the guys are making it. It's gonna take a few days. It'll be gone. So.
I, I know that at one time, uh, uh, you had the supervisors out to see a piece of equipment that we use, and I thought we would use that if we had a curb that was developing to pulverize that, and then you can easily move that.
Yep. We do still have it. The issue we're running into, we don't have enough tractors.
Okay.
We have two green tractors that can run that and both are remote.
Yeah.
So, that's what we're running into. So.
That's okay.
And I've had deep discussions about that, like I'd rather see that moving than
Yeah.
the, if they're gonna do this type of stuff. So, like I said, I'm working on that we need to create a plan so that we are all on the same page of when this stuff's gonna happen, so that we can get those dedicated pieces of equipment to those areas.
Okay.
So, um, something else. Um, hauling trucks hauling the dusty of the gravel miles, we're sixty eight percent done, eighty three out of one twenty two. Um, we still have two routes to get completed for mowing granular. Uh, the uh, pavements have been done. Um, twelve work orders completed. You will see some uh, um, Denko is out doing some slurry leveling up by Belmont today, um, back on Little Lane. And then also, I think it's just Little Lane that we're doing. And then they're gonna do R fifty nine um, from C B four to into Galt. Um, you know, where you have those big thermal dips. So they're gonna be doing that. Um, I did tell them that that is the detour for the DOTs. Right now, we did top, stop and talk to the DOT last week. Um, they are nowhere near done when we stopped out there.
To where? Which one?
For the
I was
Fifty nine.
Yeah.
Are they getting woke?
Yeah, no, they weren't even shouldered. They didn't, they had piles of dirt everywhere.
Are they working on it?
Oh, yeah, they, we, we were out there because they had our, they were doing their Oh yeah, they, we, we were out there because they had our, they were doing their diamond grinding, so we wanted to see where they were at, they didn't, they had still. Of ten inch drop off of uh, off the concrete.
Oh, wow.
By the, by the. I drove it this morning.
They rolled it this morning, oh, they didn't tell me.
Oh yeah, no, it's open and it looks beautiful.
Great, so no detour then.
Yeah, and I think, I thought I saw secondary road guys with maybe taking signs.
That we wouldn't be taking those downs as a DOT signs.
I gotcha.
So. So something we need to work on, the DOT needs to work on, let me let's know this stuff.
Right.
The communication part, so great, it is open. Um, when we stopped out there last week, the guy said they wouldn't even be done by Friday.
Oh, I think Brian told me that they were done Friday, because it was open, so.
Which I drove it.
This morning.
Okay.
Good, we go. So was there still piles of dirt everywhere or just?
It was clean.
They must have really put a push on it, because it didn't look like they were gonna.
And all the ditch and they had the big rock and the, for the.
Yep, good deal. So then Denko won't have to work, worry about the detour.
Right, right, that'll be nice.
So I have.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll skip the uh, uh, nine, ten, eleven, we'll go down to uh. Our drainage uh trustees, um, we have a conference call at nine thirty.
And so you can find on your computer.
Yeah.
Each should have a copy that I put in your box of the completion report. Put it in there a couple weeks ago. And then you should also have one objection that came within your box.
Good morning, we are on. So move, move straight county. Okay, second.
Okay, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All ayes for Wright County.
Yeah, hi, I'm the project engineer, uh, we grabbed the completion report, there's copies up here. Uh, if you don't have them, not gonna read it verbatim, but I am gonna just kinda use it as a guide to go over the project timeline, history, costs, things like that, so. Just starting out on uh page two, a little bit of timeline. So we're requested by a joint uh board of security managers acting as trustees, investigate report. Um, possible repairs or improvements on the lower end of the vein tile D D two one hundred. As a result, we generated an engineer's report dated May eighteen for twenty twenty-two. That report talked about the need uh and feasibility of doing repairs and different options as far as uh. Uh, possible repairs along with construction costs of the same. A hearing was held August eighth of twenty twenty-two, as a result. The district trustees had us proceed with doing plans and specs for the open ditch option, which essentially was converting the lower end of the main tile with open ditch itself. Um, we got the plans and specs done, drafted up. And bid letting date of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three was set, and we had six bidders, which was good. Um, not that this was a small project, but it was a huge, huge project, so we liked to see six bidders there. Uh, jet drain and cleaning, uh, at Ames was the lowest responsible bidder, they signed the contract on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. They started construction activities with the removal of the trees and vegetation all the way to June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. And then they started the rest of the actual construction, started moving old tile, building the open ditch, the head wall and that type of thing. Uh, the week of October second, twenty twenty-three. Also, they got everything wrapped up except for the seeding and erosion control and smaller lines on the punch list. Uh, but we took December fifteen, which is about two weeks before the contract completion date. The seeding erosion control punch list, they got wrapped up uh the week of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. But the quick timeline was, um, I think most everybody's aware of it, so questions on the timeline itself?
None from Wright County.
Moving on to page three, uh, just project deviation in general, it, the project solved, um, plans and specs fairly well. Uh, there's always a little difference between the bid quantities and the quantities installed, this project wasn't different. So we ended up requiring three surface drains, uh, we did find a private tile out there that needed to be outletted, which was surprising, I did think we'd find one out there, but hey, there was one. Um, the box cover by secondary road ended up being a little bit longer than our plans showed, but that's okay. And then we did put full rip wrap from the head wall all the way up to the start of the box cover, so we didn't have any erosion occurring in there. Also, that increased the contract by nine thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty cents. But when we look at the total project cost, we're talking engineering, uh, construction, including that little addition. We're estimating total project cost right at two hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, that doesn't include any reports or any hearings or that prior to the bid letting. But that is right at what we said at the initial hearings, I mean, I think it was like within twenty-five bucks of what we said at initial hearings, which I've never had any company that both. Either always a little under or a little over, so. Um, and that was good, the contractor's work was, their work basically was a little bit slower than we anticipated. Uh, and it did take them a little bit longer to get it done, especially the seeding and punch list, uh, but still, the costs are right in line with what we talked about originally. Questions on the cost for deviation?
None from Wright County.
A lot of that cost was uh associated with the extension of the box cover, or a lot of longer box cover. And the rip rapples, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and then there's some tile and stuff. Yeah, it's mainly the additional rip route and then outletting that tile that we didn't think would be there. Um, like I said, I was just really surprised service the tile in there, because we didn't go that far past Oakland Avenue, I assume. There won't be anything, but we probably sent you. Other questions on the cost? You guys are making this easy on me because they have a big one. Um, turn to page four, we can talk about damages. Uh, during construction, no crocs, Nordic Oakland Avenue were impacted because of Dunbar ground, there was grass and trees conservation plan from my understanding. Um, and South Oakland Avenue, uh, partially a little bit of grass waterway, and it was also some. Road crop ground that wasn't under production during construction. Um, there may have been some ground south of uh Oakland that didn't get planted, or maybe they had to do some preempt plan or something like that, I, I don't know. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I checked with my brother who's lieutenant, and he says there was no concern about any problem.
Okay, alright, that's good to know. Um, no offense, we're moved that we're aware, so just if anybody filed damage claims, which it doesn't sound like that's the case for this, for crop damage or fences. We just recommend those be evaluated individually, but. Um, as of this report, the project's incomplete in general accordance with the plans and specs, uh, lien waivers are submitted there later on in the report. Um. Really, I think it's pretty much all buttoned up, after the completion hearing, the final payment needs to be authorized to the uh contractor. Once the project's accepted, about twenty-four thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents. Uh, project does have a two-year warranty, we always recommend that somebody walk it. Um, prior to the end of the warranty, either we can do that, or usually landowners just do it, they're out there all the time anyway. Um, but it's always good to make sure that, you know, we don't get past that two-year warranty by a week or a month or something, then have an issue that we know. So.
When does that warranty start today? Uh, uh, it's not the completion when the contractor left, it's the completion report.
That is acceptance by the owner.
I was just double checking on that, that's what I thought it was, but.
Other than that, I really don't have anything else, does anybody have questions or anything about the project itself?
Uh, boost from Wright County, we did have uh received one comment objection, uh, it was concerning the. Um. The calculation on uh benefit and uh. And I, I didn't know if you had seen that letter, Lee, or not.
Yeah, is that from Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I wanted.
And, and I'm, I'm assuming that's uh item number one, item number two, um, I'm assuming that that would be covered. Under the uh easement that the drainage district would have um on that uh ditch. Including the head wall.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe I could just speak to the first comment objection to start with, um. So just reading through it, um, you just took the total cost divided by the number of acres, and then your guys, your land is over that average.
Five thousand, and I, it was explained to me, there's a weighted benefit. Um, but I'm at the very bottom end of this, all the upland people will drain before me, so I was just asking. How was that weighted benefit calculated? And can I back up first?
Go ahead.
Thank you for getting this project done, I talked to Neil Thomas, our neighbor who initiated the project, I. Read your first report, this really needed done, so thank you for getting it done, now back to my first question, sir.
Yeah, so, the way drainage district works is there's um something called a classification, which is essentially how the costs are apportioned. That classification, when the district was created, there was the three person board appointed, two disinterested landowners from the county, since this is a joint. There's probably one from each county, and an engineer. They would go out and look at each forty acre section within the drainage district boundary, they would. Figure out which one they felt was gonna be the most benefited by this project, and that's what they called the hundred percent benefit parcel. Then they would compare every forty acre parcel to that hundred percent benefited, so everybody else was less than a hundred percent. Based off of that, then they would apportion the cost, so the hundred percent benefited forty acres would end up paying the most of anybody. Um, typically. Per acre, uh, and then that classification went through a hearing process just like we are today, once it was adopted. That stays in place forever unless it becomes inequitable, and then they do a reclassification, or just you can point commission if you go through the same thing again. So. I don't know a hundred percent how they did it back then, obviously they had different technology, I can tell you how we would do it today. Today, we would take a look at soil types, so the poorly drained soils would. Indicate a higher need for artificial drainage, so they would end up paying more, typically folks that are closer to the district facility. End up paying more because if you're farther away from the district facility, you may be higher up, but you have to maintain some private tile to get there. Whereas the folks right on the district facility can tie right into it. Uh, the soil types also talk about um slopes, typically soil types will incorporate slopes, those are the factors typically we use now today. Back then, I, I won't say they were that precise, but um, they did use something at their best skill and judge, I O code still reads the same it did back then.
Thank you, so we're just uh. A far minus lack of a better word, we're just all set up when the drainage bit is created.
Yep, and they'll stay in place until they're ruled inequitable uh by the district trustees, and then you go through the exact same process again. The tough thing about classifications are, the only people that. The only people that pay for a district project are the folks that are inside the district boundaries. So in order for you to go down, somebody else goes up to compensate, so it isn't always a matter of proving you need to go down, it's also. A matter of why somebody else should go up, so it's.
I'll talk to Neil, my neighbor, see if he wants to.
Yeah, sounds good.
And also the classification process, Mr. Peterson, is uh quite expensive, or re- reclassification is quite expensive.
A lot of time, boy, see reclassifications occurring is if we're doing a project just on the lateral, and there's only one classification, so everybody in the whole district pays for that. Lateral, even though they may not use it. A lot of times we'll see reclassification then, because then only those people on that lateral would end up paying. Uh, that's a good example of being inequitable, that happens a lot, so. Yeah, that's your first uh question, your second comment was about the head wall structure. Um, we emailed back and forth, the district does own the structure and is not yours. Um.
And my, my, I have pictures of it, if the, the board is unfamiliar with what it looks like, so I'll. I, so I don't know, anyone has any interest in it.
So when the district was established by code. When a district's established, there's automatically right-of-way obtained for the facilities of the district. If it's an open ditch, then it's open ditch right-of-way, if it's a tile, it's tile right-of-way. Now, this one's a little different because there was tile right-of-way established originally, it won't be in your abstract, it's never recorded at the recorder's office. Um, and we converted that to an open ditch. Though it's a different type of right-of-way and different use, um, I understand your concern uh about the. Having an agreement regarding liability.
My concern is not with the right-of-way, the district has every right, but what it's there.
Yeah.
My concern, um, if the county is responsible for owns it and responsible for maintenance. Or if there's an accident during maintenance operation, you know, then it's, well, you're the landowner. And so that's where I, or the, or the general public, I mean, some people. Will probably use that open dish to access the river for fishing, they walk that, hey, we can walk through that box cover, let's think that'd be cool to do. Then they go, you know, and then they fall on the rocks, see, my, my concern isn't right-of-way or, or your authority to do it, it's that, see, I would then be. Sued for, for part of this, and so I'd like an encroachment agreement. That protects me and the landowner from liability related to issues related to the head wall structure, it shouldn't cost the county. A thing, because to my understanding, I'm the one who wants it, so I pay the filing fee to put that on the deed and stuff, so. So my question would be, how do we start that process? Again, has every legal right to do it, it's a good structure, but. I'm scared about future liability, an encroachment agreement. Where to dress that? So, how, how do we start that?
I mean, that would be the district trustee's discretion, if you guys wanna do it, you can, I, I will say this just based on my experience with court cases. If that is in place, that will not prevent a lawsuit, because usually the way lawsuits work is everybody gets sued. But we'll do those when you get in front of the judge, it would be your get out of jail card.
Right.
So, I just wanna make it clear that. You know, they shoot everything they can, and then see what they can bag, so. But that would be a district trustee's uh discretion, I understand the concern, that was what I mean.
The head wall is about an hour.
Yep, the head wall, open ditch for the crappies, all district facility, all the drains district owns all of them.
And it's all put on my property, so that's, that's where the liability thing comes in.
So, however you guys wanna proceed on that.
Yeah, I would like to point out that I'm not asking for compensation for loss and bond re- for anything like that. Doesn't need to be done, all that, so my district's only concern is liability.
Yeah, and you said you would pay the filing fees, right, so I don't. See, issue, what's Wright County think?
Um. Are, we don't have legal representation here, um, so, uh, I guess, I, I don't know what. Um.
As long as we're sure as the district, but not the county, the county has no issue with it, it's a district tile, not a county asset.
Right.
It's a district asset.
Yes.
See, that's acting as trustees now instead of. Supervise. Yeah, so I mean, that, that agreement would come through the district, not through the county, because. These guys are acting as district supervisors, but truthfully, landowners can be their own trustees if they want to. These guys are just acting as the trustees today, that's the default mode of drainage districts, um, so, that's the folks who would. Grant you this agreement would be the drainage district, not the county.
Yeah, and at least, at least from uh my point of view, I would wanna seek some legal counsel. Concerning entering into something like that.
Well, my thought was. I would hire an attorney to write it. I would hire an attorney to write it, and we would send it to you. And then you would, of course, probably run it by whoever, and that would just be the process, so, you know, and then.
I'm, I'm willing to work with you on that.
Yeah, I, I am too, so.
Okay, okay, any other, so we can go ahead, that can be done later.
Go.
We have this completion report today. Uh, any other comments on the completion report?
None from Wright County.
None from Franklin. I'd entertain a motion to approve the completion report as presented.
McVicker Franklin, this could prove.
Second clue, right.
Hey, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
All ayes on Wright County.
All ayes, Franklin. Okay, that concludes this part of the drainage, uh, meeting. I will move on to a different agenda item, so if you're here just for one hundred, then you can, you can stay if you want, or you can, or you can leave, so.
Well, that's. And I would like to say, I'm very happy that you're willing to be trustees rather than me.
Yeah. Mr. Peterson, I'm, always thank anybody that comes to these meetings, because too often we hear a lot of complaints, but nobody comes to these meetings with their concerns. Whether we're starting a project or ending a project, so this is the time for you to come and voice your opinion, we appreciate that.
Well, well, and of course, my initial reaction was, oh man, what are they gonna do? And then I read the first engineer's report, and you look at the pictures, this has gotta be done. So I called my neighbor Neil Thomas who initiated it, he hadn't seen a copy of that report, he was glad I called him.
Yeah.
So I didn't know how much it needed to hide, to save the profit report, so thank you, I'll recover it right now, so it did, it did need to get done, so.
Yep, no, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll move on to, uh, Drainage District four, one, one, eight, uh, the resolution of, with Franklin and Wright County. Uh, with Aaron's family, and Roy and Jeannie are here, they were the requesters. Uh, Roy, your sister must not have made it today.
She did make her.
Okay, he thought she might be here today, but, uh, we've got the comments, and I've talked to Roy about this, I think we're all in agreement. I think the landowner's name needs to be on this, instead of a resolution, maybe have an agreement with us, the supervisors from both Wright and Franklin, and the landowner. Instead of just a resolution where we sign it. Uh, so you dropped the resolution off of it. I, I think we need to have some, uh, cause, and that's what we represented, it just shows Franklin and Wright, I believe, don't look at it today yet.
I got it, right.
But the landowner has, there's no signature for a landowner on it, and I think that's imperative that be on there. The other questions were about the legal description, and those of us who have been out there understand that part, and the legal description about the angle.
Right.
In there's ditch angles, so. I think the only thing we really need to clear up, in my opinion, you guys might have a different opinion, is that I think the landowner needs to have a signature on this agreement too.
And does the agreement need to be between the landowner, or between Roy and Jeannie, since they're the ones requesting it?
Well, your, your sister knows about it.
She knows about it, but I'm, I'm just the operator and not the landlord.
No, I know.
Okay.
You're the tenant.
Ten, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is should it be between the landowner, or between him as the tenant?
Should be the landowner. Should be.
Questions from your drainage clerk was, you know, they didn't know Marilyn, and yet, you know, I think one of the questions is, is she still alive? Well, I know her, and I know Roy and Jeannie, so I knew the situation there. She, she does not live in the state anymore.
Right.
She, does she come back still helping the fall?
No.
Oh, okay, but Roy thought she might even be here today, cause she does have residence in Des Moines yet, too.
Okay.
Well, I think there's no.
We can mail it to her to get a signature, yeah.
There's no concern of the landowner signing this agreement.
Right, good.
So, moving on, I think we just have to have a, uh, rewritten to what the concerns we have, and just making an agreement with the Drainage District trustees and the landowner.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I like the, the words on there, that it, it goes with the land, I mean, the, the agreement will go into the drainage records, so that there's record of it there. And then if the land was ever sold, it would carry on with the, the follow-on landowner.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so we'll get that changed, and then, uh, probably have to get together again and to prove it, I suppose.
Yeah.
So, okay. Thank you.
You bet, thank you. A motion to, uh, adjourn as, uh, joint, uh, drainage districts.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, let McVicker second it, all in favor signify by aye?
Aye, all ayes Wright County.
All ayes Franklin.
Okay, see you guys, thanks.
Have a good day, Jeannie.
You too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Courtney, let's move to item twelve, approve drainage claims. We have one?
Yes. And then, uh, drainage claim that we have is named Brandon Meyer for a work order that was previously, that is, this two guys that is in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, and that work order was dated, um, eight, four, twenty twenty-three, and delivered to us as completion as of eight, sixteen, twenty twenty-four.
Those were cleanouts, and they weren't in this packet.
They were previously approved as an invoice.
Yep. Motion to approve.
There a second?
Sigh.
Any further discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, no minutes from the last meeting?
Nope.
Review, writing the drainage, what ordered? We have none, reviewing, signing, open drainage, uh, district invoice, and you give us nine of them.
Correct. Uh, eight of them are brush and weed control from Joey Hera, uh, I'll just quickly run through those here. Um, we got DD twenty-three, uh, came in at seven hundred and fifty dollars, which was his estimate. Um, so we're good on that one, he does have some notes on there that you guys can see. Uh, the next one is for DD two fourteen, came in at four hundred and fifty dollars, his estimate was five hundred. So we're just below that. Uh, then we got one for DD two oh eight, came in at eight hundred dollars, the estimate was a thousand. So, the lower one again. Uh, the one oh seven lateral one for six hundred dollars, which was his estimate on that one. Uh, DD one twenty-three for one thousand three hundred, and that was his estimate on that one. Uh, DD six, came in for eleven hundred, which was also his, uh, estimate on that. And DD fourteen lateral one, he did not charge us for this one, his comment is that there's no charge, it's basically over now. Um, looking from DD two fourteen, and it didn't spray anything. So his estimate on that was a hundred and fifty, and there was no charge. Um, DD thirty-six is the last one for seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and his estimate was eight thousand. And he's got a few notes on that one as well. Um, there was one other invoice that was received, but it was a joint district, so that has been shared to that district, so we can set up a meeting, um, to approve that, since we do not have an MOU with them yet. Um, the last, uh, invoice that I have here for you guys is from Rosdam Construction. This is for, uh, work order that was filed for DD thirty-six and section thirty-five of Norway by Three M Farms. Um, this was for a ditch washout on the south side, invoice came in at four thousand five hundred and four dollars and eight cents.
I think the whole tubing, if I remember from the pictures, with the whole tubing washed out.
And that is all the invoices.
Okay.
Name it around, Jeannie, if you look that up. Uh, motion to, uh, approve and, and sign the open drainage invoice. Any further discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries, okay, Courtney, either of them for you. And most to adjourn at drainage trustees.
Sigh.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries will come back as, uh, board of supervisors, any old business, new business, or anything.
Had a demo meeting last week, other than that, nothing else.
Hey, this is Andy, can I chime in for a minute?
Yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to address the board and the gentleman that had said he had difficulty in the courtrooms upstairs. I didn't know if he was still there or not, but just to let you.
He's not.
Oh, okay. Uh, just to let you know, the district court has been, uh, in the process of replacing all the audio and visio, visual systems throughout the state, and they have completed, uh, both courtrooms in Wright County, so as of the first of this month, I would say, there is a new system up there, and it does include, uh, two pairs of headphones for people with difficulty hearing. Uh, there is also some, uh, equipment they added to do, uh, like a language link, uh, interpretation for, for all the parties involved up there now, so. That has all been updated and should be taken care of for that gentleman.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess we should ask him that, I never even thought to ask him when, when that was.
Okay. Any meetings, uh?
Uh, no. Uh, this week I have, uh.
Economic development tomorrow morning.
Yeah, economic development, um, uh, building families this afternoon. Um, and then, of course, I'll be gone the next, uh, next meeting, I depart, uh, for Colorado on Thursday.
Okay.
Return approximately the following Thursday.
Anything else for the board? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in the supervisors' meeting.
So moved.
Sigh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you. Guys, you don't know?